I had a meeting today with Emily and she had on a suit jacket, so she says she invented the pajama suit. That's her new invention.
Smart. That's pretty good. Hey, I got a question for you, Bill.
Yes, sir.
So when like something's continued before the meeting and we're doing the agenda? And I, does that have to be part of the, as a, as a, like an amendment to the agenda? Or can we just, how does that work?
So all you're really doing is giving them notice that you're going to move to continue it once you get to it.
That's it.
So you're amending the agenda, but you're not really amending anything. You're just giving a heads up. That idea is going to get continued.
So it's basically just being, you know, we approve it as published, not amended?
Correct.
Okay, that's right.
Occasionally it'll say, so you're approving an amendment because it'll say posting wasn't done properly. So we're going to have to do it. It's not a request. So once in a while, it's probably amending it, but most times it's just a heads up.
Okay. So I stopped in due City Hall today. They have a quite little setup when you walk in. I mean, they have that dialed down.
Yeah, Parks built those stands for the hand sanitizers.
Yeah.
And then all those ones in the, in the lobbies of most of the departments, they built those in like a week.
Wow. So who did the Plexiglas things that they could?
Parks.
Parks did that too?
Yep.
Wow.
They built seventeen of them of all different sizes.
They look good.
Yeah. And they're all portable, so they can move when we need them to move. So we don't have, we didn't have to drill them into the counters or anything, so.
Nice.
Before you guys start, this is Cookie.
No.
Sorry, Olive. This is Olive, our new puppy.
Nice.
Why the discrepancy in the name?
Cookie was our old dog that we used to have.
Oh, okay.
This one replaced her. He's a Shih Tzu.
Cute dog.
Your dog?
We are looking at putting Olive on the application for dog licenses that we give out to the public. What about using Joe's dog there?
I think that'd be great.
I was gonna say, you can't really see mine in that picture, so.
Wow, Liz, you're getting some great reception out there in the Swiss Alps.
I figured out the background thing. I'm so excited about it. I think it's supposed to be Redfish Lake, but, you know, I went with an Idaho theme.
This is my favorite one, but it's probably not appropriate for city council meeting.
Why not?
You think? Should I leave it?
Yeah.
It's just where I want to be right now.
So I, I, so my, I use my Google Pad, whatever it is, and it doesn't give me options. Like, I don't have any options to do that type of stuff.
Huh.
It won't let me. I've tried a million times.
All right, I don't know if we were gonna, if Joe was gonna be joining us or not. And I see we got Luke in the room, so I'll assume that he's nearby. But I, I'm prepared to get going if you guys are ready.
I'm ready.
Chris, are we ready?
We're ready, Mr. Mayor, and we are not expecting Mr. Borton tonight.
Okay, well, with that, I'll call the meeting to order. For the record, it is Tuesday, May fifth, 2020, at six oh one PM. We'll begin this meeting with roll call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Cavanagh.
Here.
Councilwoman Perrow.
Here.
Councilwoman Strater.
Here.
Councilman Hoagland.
Here.
Councilmember.
Here.
Mayor Simison.
Here.
Allison is Councilman Borton.
Okay, item two is Pledge of Allegiance. If you will, Olive, rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God.
Indivisible.
With liberty and justice for all.
Item three tonight is a community invocation, which will be led by Pastor Troy Drake with Cavalry Chapel Meridian. If you would all take a moment and join us in this invocation or enjoy a moment of silence. Pastor Drake, thank you for joining us.
Welcome, Mr. Mayor and council members. It's good to be here. Would you join me in a word of prayer? Well, Lord God in heaven, we just first off want to acknowledge you, that you're the Creator of all things and the giver of life. And we're just grateful that we can gather here, and you've given us the minds and the ability to do what we do. And so first, we just want to express our gratitude towards you and for this great place that we get to live. Lord, I'm so thankful for the Treasure Valley and Meridian. And God, we're just praying for this rebound Idaho and coming out of the, the shelter in place, stay at home. That's been going on with the coronavirus. And, and Lord, we're just praying for our citizens that they would be healthy. Lord, we pray especially for the elderly and those who are at risk, particularly at risk. And that you would protect them, God, and we wouldn't see any more loss of life in our city. And that you would, you know, just protect us, God, and help us to be smart and, and safe when it comes to what we're doing. And Lord, we're also just asking for a special blessing for our first responders. We're just so thankful that they are staying on the clock and working despite all the things that have gone on, Lord. So we just pray that you give them wisdom and protect them from harm's way as they protect us. And, and Lord, I also want to thank you for all the hospital workers and those people who've, you know, really put themselves in a difficult situation. And yet they've, they've done it with such a heroic attitude and, and work ethic. And so we're just thankful for them, God, and ask that you would keep protecting them. And so lastly, God, I just lift up our city council members and the mayor as they make decisions for our city. And that you would just give them a lot of wisdom and, and an extra measure of grace for, for what they're doing. And we appreciate them, God, for the sacrifice they're making. And I pray that you would, you know, just give them your, your wisdom when it comes to all these decisions that they make. And since Jesus' name, we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Drake. Appreciate your time.
Thanks for letting me do it.
Okay, item number four is adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Byrne.
There will be one change to the agenda as we get to it. We are going to continue item nine A. The applicant has requested to continue this, this item to May nineteenth. So when we get there, just for people who might be interested, who might be watching, that we're going to continue that. But with that said, that's the only change. With that said, I, I moved to adopt the agenda as published.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holden.
Second motion.
I have motion second to adopt the agenda as published. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Item five, consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Byrne.
I move that we approve the consent agenda for the mayor to sign and the clerk to attest.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holden.
Second the motion.
I have a motion of second to approve the consent agendas. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. There are no items moved from the consent agendas. I'll move on to item seven A. Mr. Clerk or Madam Clerk, did we have anyone who signed up under seven A?
Oh, no, sorry.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sorry, I'm sorry. I'm like pressing a whole bunch of buttons and my computer's freaking out. So I am publicly freaking out as well, and I apologize for that. We do, Mr. Mayor, have one person signed up. It is Gordon Hamilton. And he is here to speak regarding, or on behalf of Kentucky, excuse me, Kentucky Ridge Estate Homeowners Association regarding the Timberline subdivision and their, regarding fulfilling the requirements of their development agreement.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, we're good to go on this item?
Mr. Mayor, yes, I mean, Mr. Hamilton knows from the, what's on the agenda that all we can do is hear what his concern is and then set that for a future meeting. I did reach out to Mr. Hamilton right before this meeting to give him some information that I had from planning and offered to have him give me a call tomorrow and we could discuss it further. But he can at least lay out the issue and we can set it for a future discussion.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Hamilton, you're recognized for three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mayor. It, the Kentucky Ridge Estates is just south of Victory and west of Meridian. Timberline subdivision is to the east and it joins about eight of the properties that are in the subdivision. In July of 2019, Mark Bailey, who is the owner of the Timberline subdivision, contacted us to coordinate construction of the fence around the subdivision, which was a good thing because plainly what we've seen elsewhere is that the fence is the first thing built. And that's what we would have preferred. But contacted me in August and asked me to help him connect with all the adjacent landowners. I did that. They promised, they said they were going to start building the fence August eighth and ninth. That didn't ever happen. Later, we were assured it was going to happen in November. We were later assured it's going to happen in February. The builders, the individual builders have since started landscaping, planting trees, doing various things that are going to impede the construction of a fence. And as a matter of fact, one of the builders has told a neighboring landowner that there is no fence going to be built. We have not received that word from the subdivision. I have checked with the planning department and it is part of their development agreement. And I understand that when I was looking at what was on the agenda in past meetings, that now they've applied to begin phase two of the subdivision. I just want the city council to be aware of it. I was told by the planning commission that, that that would get taken care of before any retainage that's held would be returned to them. And I, I have no idea what that would amount to and whether or not it would be sufficient inducement for them to actually build the fence. But I'm concerned that the new homeowners in the subdivision are going to be stuck with this commitment and that it is affecting my neighbors here in Kentucky Ridge Homeowners Association. And I just wanted to bring it to the attention of the city council. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hamilton.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It sounds like we've got Mr. Nary looking into this, working with them on this. So hopefully this will be resolved expeditiously through that process, so he's getting answer or resolution.
Thank you very much for the time.
Thank you. Okay, item AA, under Department Commission Reports, is our city clerk annual report. So we will turn this over to Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I am here tonight in my office, while you are where you are, to present to you our 2020 department report. Drake, can you hear me okay?
Chris, you need to get a little closer or turn up your volume.
Okay, I'm gonna try to speak here. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
That's better, okay. Anyway, this is our 2020 department report. We have some, trying to get my screen to go where I want it to go, sorry, having multiple things here. First, if we were in City Hall, I'd be happy to introduce you to my staff by face, but since we are remote, just go over briefly who we are. This is the seven members of the city clerk staff. Adrian Weatherly, our deputy city clerk, who is here with us on the meeting tonight, joined us in July of 2019. Our assistant clerks Nancy Radford and Charlene Way have been returning. Kayla George is the new assistant city clerk. She took over for Sherri Finch, who retired in February. And Kayla actually joined our staff last October as an administrative assistant one in a new position council funded for fiscal year 2020. We have Barb Schiffer as our administrative assistant. And our most recent hire, Leanne Nobella, was hired in March 2020. She came in for about two hours on a Monday and immediately got sent home with her equipment and did a lot of remote training. So we learned how to do things differently and she learned, learned how to handle things multiple ways right away. We're happy to have them all here. Brief overview of what we do. I know most of you know this, but we take care of the city records, we manage the seal, the ordinances. We take the incoming calls to City Hall. We have a phone tree set up, but the majority of those calls will come to us for transfer to others or to answer general questions. We manage all the public records requests for the city, which I mentioned later, but want to point out it was a forty-two, forty-two percent increase in 2019. We administer the records retention schedule. We receive claims against the city and work with legal to get those going. We are generally a passport acceptance facility. Of course, not right at the moment, but generally we are accepting passports on behalf of the Department of State. We do all the public hearing notices, manage the public conference rooms and do those room reservations. We support city council commissions and committees across the city, as well as manage public meetings. As you all know, we handle elections for the city. Up until this past year, we also do the campaign finance, but we've been fortunate enough to turn that over to the county clerk. And then we do permits and licenses for a variety of areas within the city. Some of our major 2019 successes, first and foremost, was council. We elected, of course, three city council seats and our new mayor. We had fifteen candidates, five independent committees and one write-in candidate for those. There were over fifty-three vote, fifty-three thousand votes cast across our four ballot questions. And we had a twenty-eight percent voter turnout, fourteen percent of our voter turnout utilized early voting. Another success was our use of Novus Agenda. Each year, we've been adding more commissions to that system. This past year, we included Parks and Recreation Commission and Transportation Commission are now fully using Novus Agenda. And of course, we also went in July, sorry, in June of last year to the two-meeting-per-week format for city council. So we actually had eighty-two city council meetings in 2019 and doubled the amount of hearings we noticed. Not hearings we noticed, but meetings we noticed. We expanded ways for the public to comment and provide testimony. We added text and voice this last year. We've moved to send development application transmittals out electronically rather than large mailing, so we can get them in the hands of our agency partners faster. We've expanded the online records repository and working with IT, we can now allow more concurrent users, so less times people get locked out when they're looking for record. And the public records request response increase. We went to a web-based passport appointment scheduling, so people can schedule online without waiting for a callback. And then we actually transferred a position. We had a commission's coordinator position in our office that was doing some support for the clerk's office. And with the additional administrative assistance, we found that that would be a better fit in our Parks and Recreation Department, enabling them to work not only on support of a couple of commissions, but working with arts and culture across the city. This coming year, some things we're working on. We've started doing alcohol license renewals online. We're looking at a way to take other permit and licenses and make them accessible online for people to go through the whole process and not have to make a trip to City Hall if not necessary. And then we've updated the renewal date on alcohol licenses. Coincidentally, this year, we've gone to align with state and county. So we're actually issuing a fourteen-month license this year in order to make our renewal date offset from when the county and state happens. So perfect timing with a lot of people not being able to operate. We're actually giving them two free months by design. We introduced the Granicus Boards Program last year, which allows us to attract attendance for our commissions, committees and council, but also will soon allow people to apply to commissions electronically online through an online application. We've certainly got our experience with virtual meetings in the past several weeks, so we're, we're working on learning that. We were looking at some enhanced public hearing noticing, not just what the planning department is examining as far as what that process will be, but we're looking at ways to get more information into the hands of more people faster and more quickly. And then we hope to this next year, take or get Solid Waste Advisory Commission as the last of our city commissions using Novus Agenda. Just some quick responses. I won't read them to you, but we, we do our best to, you know, adhere to the Meridian way with our customer service accountability, respect and excellence. And we do get a lot of positive feedback from our constituents, our citizens, as well as our commissioners, council members and coworkers we serve. And before I stand for questions, I also want to point out it is Municipal Clerks Week. I didn't delay this presentation intentionally to Cinco de Mayo or to this week, but I'm happy to say that we are part of a large organization of clerks across all fifty states, as well as fifteen nations, that are celebrating Municipal Clerks Week. So with that, I'll stand for any questions you have.
Thank you, Chris, very much. Appreciate it. Council, do you have any questions or comments for Chris?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Byrne.
I don't, I don't have any questions, just a comment. Chris and your staff, last month and a half has been very interesting. It's been, you know, we, we've done business in the city of Meridian much differently than, than in the past. But it's amazing, the seamless transition that we've made to these virtual Zoom meetings, and you guys have done a phenomenal job. I know it looks easy. I know it, from the face of it, it looks like, you know, it's just somewhat simple. We've been doing Zoom meetings for a long time, so we're sort of getting accustomed to them, accustomed, accustomed to them. But I, I know behind the scenes, you guys have done an enormous amount of work. And so, and I'm proud to say, we're the only municipality in the Treasure Valley that has done public meetings along with public hearings as well during this timeframe. And in, in it's one hundred percent because of you guys. So I wanted to take this opportunity on behalf of council to say thank you for your, for your hard work and diligence.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. We, we definitely are doing what we can to survive through this and we appreciate your patience with us and thank you for the kind words.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Chris. Appreciate the information and the presentation. With that, we will move into our action items for the meeting. First up is action item ninety, a public hearing, continued from April fourteenth, twenty twenty, for Idaho Central Credit Union, age twenty twenty, S zero zero one six. I'll open the public hearing and see if I have a motion from council.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Byrne.
I move that we continue item number H dash two zero two zero dash zero zero one six. An item for Idaho Central Credit Union to May nineteenth, two thousand twenty.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holden.
I will second that and have a question.
Gentlemen has recognized first question.
I just wanted to make sure, is it May nineteenth or May twelfth, Councilman Byrne?
It's nineteenth.
Is it the nineteenth? Okay, great. Want to confirm that, so, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, I have a motion of second. Is there any further discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Item nine B is a public hearing, which is a request for variance to the substantial improvement section of the flood damage prevention code. Ten dash six dash five dash two by Eric Kendall. Now, turn this, open this public hearing with staff comments.
Okay.
You, Jason Corn, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, great. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, for your consideration this evening is a request for variance of our flood damage prevention ordinance. The details were included in the council memo and the applicant's request letter. And we are asking for approval of the request variance. And I hope to be back before you next week with a detailed presentation of our flood plan program and our flood damage prevention ordinance and a revision that we are going through. So this feels a little bit like jumping the gun, but we're here a little bit early on this. This request involves a proposed addition to a residence that meets the definition of a substantial improvement by increasing the gross floor area over twenty percent. Now, substantial improvement requires that the entire structure be brought into floodplain overlay district elevation standards. So they would have to raise the house to our standard, which is two feet above base flood elevation. But this twenty percent standard is not a requirement of the National Flood Insurance Program, but it's a higher standard that Meridian had adopted. And one of the modifications to the ordinance that I'll be proposing hopefully next week is to remove that additional twenty percent gross floor area threshold. So we have that in there as part of a community rating system program, which provides a discount to flood insurance policies in Meridian. And we've determined that the points we receive from that particular requirement are, are not really needed to get to the classification that we have. We have excess of points, so we can easily absorb that and make it a lot easier in managing our ordinance and additions and improvements. And stick to that fifty percent of market value threshold, which is the National Flood Insurance Program and FEMA required threshold for substantial improvements. So with that is the recommendation of the Public Works Department, that city council approve this ordinance variance request as it relates to the proposed addition to the residence at twenty-one sixty North Todd Way in Meridian.
Thank you, Jason. Council, do you have any questions for Jason? Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing. Did we have anyone sign up to testify? I assume the, as I see, the homeowner is present, is that who'd like to testify next, Mr. Clerk or Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, we don't have anybody signed up to speak, but if the applicant is here, I think Chris may know about that.
Yeah, with the, with the homeowner like to speak on this application, on this variance request?
Um, yes.
If you could say your name and address for the record, please.
So Eric Kendall, twenty-one sixty North Todd Way, Meridian, Idaho.
Thank you, Mr. Kendall. You have three minutes to speak.
Thank you, members of the city council. Thank you, mayor. And thank you, Jason, for all of your hard work and effort. Jason has worked incredibly hard to work through all of the floodplain codes and, and all the city ordinances to get us to this point where we have an opportunity to add the additional square footage, hopefully, to our home to allow us to have room for our growing family in a way that we can afford in this crazy real estate market that we currently have. So just thank you to the city council and to Jason and to the mayor for all, all your hard work and effort to help have us have a city that is safe and enjoyable and nice to live in.
Okay, council, do you have any questions for Mr. Kendall? Okay. Thank, thank you very much. This is a public hearing. If there's anybody else on the call who would like to provide testimony on this item, if you can use the raise your hand feature in the middle of your screen or you can unmute yourself by doing star nine and can be recognized to speak. We'll give about fifteen seconds. Anybody that'd like to do that? Okay, seeing no one raising their hand to provide testimony. Council, do I have any additional questions or do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move that we close the public hearing on the request for variance.
I move that we close the public hearing on the request for variance to the substantial improvement section of the flood damage prevention code as it pertains to 2160 North Todd Way.
I have a motion second to close the public hearing. Is there any discussion on the motion? If, if not, the clerk will call the roll.
Well, Mr.
Sorry, sorry.
Mr. Mayor.
Favor opposing public hearing, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay? Guys have it.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holton.
I move that we approve the request for variance to the substantial improvement section of the flood damage prevention code for the property located at 2160 North Todd Way.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
I'll second that.
Have a motion second to approve the variance request. Is there a discussion on the motion? If not, clerk will call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Cavanagh.
Aye.
Perot.
Aye.
Trader.
Aye.
Hogland.
Aye.
Burr.
Trigger muted.
Aye, sorry.
Aye.
All ayes, motion passes. Thank you again, Jason and Mr. Kendall for your time on this item. With that, we'll move to item 9C, a public hearing for Almond subdivision, H 2019 dash 0135. I'll open this public hearing with staff comments.
Um, it's a request for annexation and zoning and, excuse me, I think I was just now unmuted. I should have unmuted myself earlier. Let me back up. This project was before you recently. It's a request for annexation and zoning and preliminary plat. It consists of 9.75 acres of land. It's owned RUT in Ada County and is located at 5885 and 5875 North Locust Grove Road. The comprehensive plan, future land use map designation is medium density residential, which is three to eight units per acre. City Council heard this project on March 24th. At that meeting, council approved the project consistent with the commission's recommendation for the buildable lots to be reduced by five to no more than 45 buildable lots and to have no more than six lots off of the cul-de-sac at the east end of the development. They also requested that construction traffic use the existing curb cut via Locust Grove Road for as long as possible to keep construction traffic off of existing streets and adjacent subdivisions. The applicant was not in agreement with revising the plat per the council's decision and is requesting council consideration of a revised plat that depicts the following changes. Number one, a reduction in buildable lots from 50 to 33, resulting in larger buildable lots and a reduction in gross density from 5.08 to 3.38 residential units per acre. Removal of the perimeter common area and loop pathway along the north and south boundaries, resulting in a decrease in qualified open space from 1.62 acres, 16.6% to 1.01, 10.3%. A change in amenities from a pathway and community garden to children's play equipment. And a change from single level patio homes to one and two story typical, single family detached homes. The project was renoticed at the direction of the city attorney and the staff report has been updated consistent with the proposed revised plat. Written testimony has been received since the last hearing from Dean Wade, the applicant's representative. He is in agreement with the revised staff report. And from David Henchman, he is requesting this development have a direct access via Locust Grove Road so that traffic isn't going through adjacent neighborhoods. The applicant should be here ready to provide testimony on a presentation tonight. That's all the staff has. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, any questions for staff at this point in time? Okay. If not, I'll ask the applicant to come forward and say their name and address for the record.
Dean Wade, 4283 Nystrom Way. Are you able to hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you, Dean.
Evening, Mayor. Thank you. Thank you, council members, for taking the time this evening to hear us. Also want to especially thank Sonia, Sonia Allen and the city staff for all the work that they've done to get us to this point. As she stated on March 24th, we presented this plat for Almond subdivision. That night, there was some concern about density and congestion and council asked us to reduce the number of lots on the plats. Do we have my presentation available? It's not much different than Sonia's, but that available to be brought up? Okay. I wonder if I had power over it. I do not. So is there someone that can look through this as we go?
Mr. Mayor, this is Chris. I'm going through this for you. So let me know when you go to the next slide. I don't have a way.
Okay.
Over my screen, sorry.
Thank you. So yeah, on, on the 24th, this, the plat was approved as stated by Sonia with the request to reduce, reduce the number of lots and to make sure that we had no more than lots on the cul-de-sac. And we have done that. Can you go ahead and scroll through then? Next slide? Actually, you can scroll through these two slides, the details that Sonia went over. I won't recover that tonight. I would like to just reiterate that we believe this infill project is in line with statements that have been made by Mayor Sinison by some of the council members that infill is important to the healthy growth of Meridian and stable growth for, for the Meridian housing. This is the plat that was approved on the 24th. Again, then with the, the reduction of the two less than 45 lots and no more than six lots on the activities. Okay, next slide. This is the plat as we are presenting it tonight. As you see, we have reduced to 33 buildable lots. Less than the 45 that we were asked to do. And there are four, I guess maybe five lots accessing on that, that cul-de-sac, but we have made the requested changes of the city council. We ask that you approve this plan as presented. Are there any questions?
Council, any questions for the applicant? Okay. Dean, thank you very much.
You.
Madam Clerk, did we have anybody sign up to provide testimony?
Mr. Mayor, we have one person signed up. That's Tyler Roundtree, running Arcadia Homeowners Association.
Okay. Mr. Roundtree, you are representing HOA, I understand it. So you'd be up to 10 minutes. But if you could say your name and address for the record.
Tyler Roundtree, 1098 Passakana, Meridian, Idaho. Mr. Mayor and members of council, my only ask with this project on approval is for the lots that are on the west end of the project. If we could set some type of height requirement, the homes through Arcadia, because of the way the subdivision is situated, the homes are fairly close to the back lot line, which would be their east lot line, the west lot line of the proposed Almond subdivision. And the only reason that we are asking this is, is we were conveniently reminded when we were talking about the original proposal with the subdivision and the issues that we're already facing with the Cory Barton subdivision next to ours on the height and the proximity of the two-story homes. And Mr. Parsons was quick to respond that when I commented having two-story homes in everybody's backyard, he said all you had to do was ask to have that not happen. So I would be a fool not to stand in front of you tonight and at least ask that we put a heights requirement on some of those west lots that abut to Arcadia subdivision.
Thank you, Mr. Roundtree. Council, do you have any questions for Mr. Roundtree?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holton.
Mr. Roundtree, question. Are, are those houses that are in your subdivision, are they all consistently the same distance away from the west lot line for, for this subdivision?
Members of, or Mr. Mayor, members of council, no. So as far as the plat goes, lots 14, and I'm having a hard time seeing it on, on what I'm trying to view it on. I think it's 1415 in particular. There we go. It would be, it would be nice to see a heights requirement on those two lots. 13 and 16 and 17, I think if you were to get into our subdivision, there's actually a, a two-story home on a similar driveway arrangement as lots 13 and 14 in Arcadia. But for those lots 1415, it would be nice to get a, a single level or a heights requirement based off of where they were at with the original development on at least those two lots.
Mr. Mayor, council, Mr. Roundtree, thank you.
Council, any further questions? Where's Roundtree? Okay, thank you very much. As was stated before, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone else on the call who would like to provide testimony on this topic? You can do so by raising your hand at the bottom or if you're on the phone with star nine to unmute yourself. And looking at the attendee list, I don't, so one person I see that I don't know, but they're not raising their hand. So with that, I'll ask the applicant to please come forward with any final comments.
Hello, this is Dean Waits. The only comment I would have regarding the public testimony shared is that you believe that height restrictions and distance from the lot line have been set by the Meridian City Code and we are willing to abide that. That is all that I have.
Council, any additional questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Dean, a question for you about lot 16, part of your open space that kind of goes there to Locust Grove. Is that just a, an open grassed area? Is it fenced off? Is there a pathway that connects to the sidewalk? Anything you can speak of about that particular lot?
It is open. It would be heavily landscaped along both lot lines, but just open grassy area with full landscaping.
Mr. Mayor, follow up.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Dean, are there any unique aspects of the elevations that would prevent doing a sidewalk or a pathway connection to the sidewalk?
No, there are not. That, that could happen. There, there will be a, there is a berm planned there, but we could make it real still.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holton.
A question for Mr. Waite and possibly Deputy Chief Monjorno. Last time when this was before us, we had a discussion about that cul-de-sac at that east there. And making sure we had enough room for, for our fire trucks to make the turn. Are, are we, are we good on those diameters to, to make that happen?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Hogland, yes, the, the fire code requires a 48-foot minimum radius cul-de-sac. So as long as he meets the minimum, then from that point, he'll have to, you know, just sign it. No parking, you know, fire lane from that point. So as long as he meets that 96 feet, we, we should be good diameter.
Mr. Mayor, Deputy Chief Monjorno, thank you for that. I, I was hoping that was the answer. And it looks like without the densities, we won't have a trash can issue come garbage day with, with the fire truck. So that'll be helpful.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
I have a question for the planning staff, Sonia. Yes. My question was, under our city code, if the homes that I guess are adjacent to lots, were, was it 15 and 16? Or I don't remember which two lots, but there are two lots that it sounded like might be really close where a HOA was requesting some kind of a height restriction. What is allowable under the code?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Schrader, 35 feet is the maximum height.
A follow up.
Councilwoman Schrader.
And is there any difference depending on how close the home, the homes are to the lot line next to them?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Schrader, no, code does not speak to that. There's a set setback dependent on the district that the property is in.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Guess I'd have a question for Mr. Roundtree if he's still available, which would just be, you know, exactly how close are, are those specific homes? If he has that information, I guess that would give me a sense as to the urgency around that.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, I was just looking at the map. If you pull up Google Maps, you can get a good view of, of what Mr. Roundtree was talking about.
Deputy Chief. Monjorno.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, I am.
If I may, Councilwoman Schrader, in the R15 zoning district, the required rear setback is 15 feet. If it's in the R8 district, the required setback is 12 feet. So that would be the closest that the structure could be to the property line, if that helps at all.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor, a question for Sonia.
Councilman Holton.
So Sonia, lots of, they, they could meet the 12-foot setback and code could allow a two-story house. Is, is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Hogland, that is correct.
And Mr. Mayor and Sonia, if I might do a follow up?
Councilman Holton.
So those, those lots in particular, 14 and 15, kind of have an idea now where those are located with those other houses. We could, via council action, make those single story. Is, is that right?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Hogland, that is correct. You could include a provision in the development agreement restricting homes on certain lots to a single story.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Maybe a clarification from either Sonia or Bill. If we, if council were to do that, should it be a, a height provision as opposed to a story recommendation? I just, I know in the past, we haven't conditioned story size. We've always conditioned to height. You could have a 30-foot tall, single-story house essentially. And so I don't know if, if there's a recommendation from staff about that one way or another. And I guess in the follow-up would be a recommendation of height for a single-story home. Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
I guess I'll start and I don't know if Sonia has the answer to that last part of your question, Councilman Cavanagh. The, definitely a height restriction is easier from a management of the development agreement standpoint. We have, we have put story restrictions on occasion. So Sonia's correct. I mean, we have had that limitation. It, it can be challenging because you're right. You could put a 35-foot single, single-story house. If it has a bonus run, does that make it a second story generally? And the building code does not consider that to be a second story, I believe. But it is challenging, but certainly you, again, this is an annexation application. You could certainly put that limitation. I'm just trying to think in my head, how would we enforce it? How's planning going to review it? To do that, and I don't know if Sonia has any additional insight on how that would get reviewed. To do that, and I don't know if Sonia has any additional insight on how that would get reviewed uh from the planning and the building side, so.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, um, if I could respond now, um, I, if it's height that we're concerned about, I, I would recommend placing a specific uh feet restriction. In the, in the previous uh development plan for this subdivision, the applicant had agreed to a twenty-five-foot-tall um height on single-story homes. So you ask for a specific number, um, that might be a consideration. If it's more of a concern of um people looking out their two-story windows into adjacent yards or homes. Uh, in the past, sometimes we've allowed um single-story with a bonus room with no windows on the back. So that's a, that's a couple considerations for you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hogland.
Yes, is, is Mr. Waite available?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Waite, you're, in your application, you talk about uh, you're gonna have one and two-story uh a typical, you know, single-family detached homes. I- is it possible to have a single-story homes in, in lot fourteen and fifteen?
That we'd like to be open to what the buyers would want, and I'm not sure why we would give special consideration to, to that, to the neighborhood to the west, when everyone would like a single-level home in their backyard instead of a two-story. So I'm not sure why we would give special consideration to those other lots. Yeah, we would prefer to have the open, the ability to put what the buyer wants on those.
Good, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Perrow.
I just want to speak to, to that, uh, what Councilman Hogland just, just asked the applicant about. Um, I understand the applicant's uh statement, completely understand his statement, and I really appreciate that they have gone to great lengths to change this plan significantly um, at the recommendation of the, of the Planning and Zoning Commission and Council. Very, very much appreciated. I, I think it, it works a lot better with the surrounding area, which was one of Council's main concerns the last time we met. Um, so, but let me just say, I really do appreciate that very much. Um, but I, I don't think it's un, um, I don't think it's asking too much to do a height restriction on just two lots in that area, and um, so I, I'd like to recommend to my fellow council members that we consider um putting that in as a, an element of the development agreement.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
Um, I am in agreement with Councilwoman uh Perrow, and I just, I think the difference to me looking at the Google Maps view of it, those two lots are clearly much, much closer than any of the surrounding neighborhoods. They just seem exceptionally close, and I don't think asking two of them to be restricted is an undue burden. Mr. Mayor, maybe if the um applicant wants to comment further, if it causes a specific problem with his business plan, it makes it unworkable if he wants to express anything about that or any other special considerations that we should be aware of.
In my mind, it, it puts a limit on us based on what another developer or builder decided to do. It's, we didn't have any say on where they built their house. They built it to code, to code, I'm assuming, so we'd like to do the same to build it to code. There are other houses that are, are close to the, to their rear property line. Don't think that that should be a factor in deciding what the city code should be or what should be allowed on these lots.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
I, I kind of see both sides of it. Um, just speaking for myself, I mean, on the one hand, the property owners that purchased those two properties knew they had a tiny backyard, right? Uh, that this was a possibility in the future. Um, on the other hand, you know, it seems like these two lots out of a significant number could, could uh be the most impacted, so I, I guess I sort of see both sides of it.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burt.
I noticed that uh someone has their hands raised, hand raised in uh, in the attendee box.
Yes, I just, I'm, I'm trying to respect our process and not bring up second people and have the developer have the last word, but if the council would like to hear from the other, uh, since we only had other person, I'm happy to allow it. Count, okay? Uh, Mr. Roundtree, if you'd like to uh state your comment or question.
No, I, I just, there was a question on whether I was still here, so I, I, I am still here. Um, you, you know, again, my only ask is, is basically what you're saying is, is from back to back of the houses. If there was a two-story home built on those two lots, you're twenty-four feet from house to house. And to Dean's point, you're right, the houses were built. I just, again, based off of all of the commentary that's come out of, of these meetings to Mr. Parsons' point, all you had to do was ask. And so that's the ask on behalf of the homeowners that are living there now, you know? If they have a two-story home that is built within twelve feet of that back property line, it's pretty much gonna dwarf what little bit of yard that they currently have. That, it, it's an ask at this point. It, it, it seems reasonable, but that's it.
Yeah, now, so counsel, I, I'm not a physics major, um, or whatever, I may not be the right subject. But the funny thing about this is the closer you get with the higher the house, the better off the neighborhood, the neighbor actually is in some situations. Because if you're further back at a higher distance, you can actually see potentially into the home. Um, as compared to being closer, you can't see into the home, but you would have an opportunity to see in the backyard. So, you know, setbacks aside, i- it can be a plus or a minus in either si- area, even for the other homes, which have a greater setback distance. Um, for rear-facing neighbors uh looking into either windows or backyards. So there is no ideal height or distance that I'm aware of to resolve these type of issues. But there is perception and comfort level.
Um, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hogland.
Uh, i- next time, if you could do a diagram on the whiteboard, that'd be very helpful.
I'm gonna do it right back there on my piece of art.
And we, we'd like to see that. I, I guess the issue is, you know, we have a, have a subdivision that is of, of uh, single-story and two-story homes that's, that's going in. Um, you know, we deal with requests all the time. When new development comes into an existing area, there are impacts and, and there are trade-offs that, that happen. And I guess, you know, I, I, I think it's a legitimate ask, and for us to determine, in this case, should there be two single-story homes in two lots of the subdivision? Um, which is going to have single-family homes, and I understand they might not be right where a buyer may wanted that particular home, but I, I, I think it's legitimate for, for the council to, to, to consider that request.
Yeah, and it, the reason, you look at it all around and infill. Yeah, unfortunately, the last project in typically gets the greatest scrutiny in infill, which is why it can be so difficult to do. You just have to look around the other projects that you're approving and looking at, where we are approving projects in some cases, which there's five feet of separation between lot lines, and you can have a second and a first story right across from each other. Um, I can look across my back at the homes across my street, and I've got a, a, a three-story next to a one-story that are um pretty much corner to corner. So i- in many situations, we don't have the luxury of choosing these types of situations when you are building and purchasing. Um, but you didn't have an opportunity to weigh in here if you think it's the appropriate thing to do.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Uh, to that point, I know that, that's how our home is set up as well, is I've got probably twenty feet from my back porch to my neighbor's back porch. Our home was our dream home that we wanted to buy, and we wish that we would have had more space between our neighbors, but ultimately didn't dissuade us from buying our house. Um, and I, I am going back and forth because those, those two homes that we're talking about in question with very, very small yards. They moved into that house knowing that those homes had very, very small yards, and it was very, very possible their neighbors would be close to them. I think your point is well heard. There's no magic number for an elevation or a, a, a story that would, you know, not create some of the challenges of having somebody be that close to them. Um, but at the same time, I am sympathetic to our request from a neighborhood association about what they would like to see. If it was an all a two-story project, I would probably be more hesitant to, to condition a height. Uh, but because they are doing a mix, to Mr. Hogland's point, it does seem to say these two. One could make the case to all five, but I, I definitely think at least those two. If, if that is where we're going to head, I, I could be supportive of those two. Um, if that's the will of the council.
And Mr. Mayor, question for Council Cavanagh.
Yeah.
Councilman Hogland.
Sorry.
Well, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Cavanagh, what, it sounded like there was also interest in uh having some sort of connectivity uh through that uh open space at the cul-de-sac to uh Locust Grove.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Mr. Hogland, that's something I'm really supportive of. Um, I'm a, we've had lots of conversations about pathways and about connectivity. Um, you know, I really applaud kind of the creative approach to the use of open space there. Um, I think our goal is always to make sure that it's, it's functional and serves a purpose. And if we can allow the people that are in that neighborhood and even some of the surrounding neighbors to be able to get onto Locust Grove by accessing a small sidewalk or pathway, to me, I think that's a, that's a no-brainer.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Perrow.
Um, I, Luke, I think that's a, excuse me, Council, Councilman Cavanagh, I think that's a great catch. I, you know, we, we don't, I haven't thought about that, but there is not an entrance off of Locust Grove, and there normally would be a sidewalk on a roadway that would enter into a new development, but, but in this case, there isn't, so um, that's a great catch, and I agree with you. I think it would be great to have a, a walking path um where there would normally be a sidewalk, but since we are not act, since the um residents won't be accessing Locust Grove, uh, there, there isn't one proposed. So if the applicant is comfortable with, with implementing one, I would agree that uh, that'd be a great addition.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Yeah, I think just for clarification, it's nothing that I would be, this has to be done. It was just more of a, a suggestion than anything.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
Uh, I'm in agreement, and I think that the pathway would serve some of the items in our comprehensive plan to talk about connectivity and actually feel comfortable requiring it. Um, just because I feel like it speaks pretty strongly to what we're looking for as a city.
Okay. Uh, I'm, just because technically I think Mr. Roundtree was the last one to spoke. I'm gonna ask the applicant, Dean, if you'd like to make any final last comments from what you've heard uh prior to entertaining the motion to close the public hearing.
I would just reiterate that this is an infill project. I appreciate your comments, Mayor, of the challenges of infill. And to place extra challenges, when we have to jump through more hoops than a, a, a open field development would, it, it's we, we do agree uh that we should follow the city codes hundred percent. Um, but we would, we would not appreciate it and put any, anything more strict than, than the current city code. We are, I mean, we feel we do have connectivity with the sidewalks, connecting to the public sidewalks, both to the, both in the south, but we are okay if the sidewalk required that to.
Okay, thank you very much. So counsel, do you have what you need, or would anyone like to make a motion regarding closing the public hearing?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Perrow.
I move that we close the public hearing for Almond subdivision H two zero two zero 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 one six.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Is there a discussion on the motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman.
Sure, we use H two zero one nine dash zero one three five.
Correct. This is a mo- motion maker in a second agree?
Yes.
All right, uh, if there's no discussion on the motion, I'll, in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay? The ayes have it.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hogland.
I, I, I think uh, I, I, I feel for Mr. Waite a little bit uh when he, when he talks about going through the wringer. I, I think he has. Um, this is his, his second uh, second swing at it, and, and uh, again, his first proposal was, was a quality development. I think this one will be a quality development as well. Um, and, and it is hard to uh, to put restrictions on something when people come in, but, but there are impacts, and we have to weigh those and determine, you know, what, what makes good neighbors and what, what makes it a good community and, and those types of things without being overly restrictive. And, and uh, and I, I think we really try to, to apply a light hand in this. And, and I don't think it's a lot because it is a mixed, mix of single-family and, and two-story homes, as, as uh, Councilman Cavanagh mentioned. If it had been all two stories, yeah, then, then it's gonna be a little difficult because it's, it's set, but where you can mix them throughout, I, I, I don't find it to be onerous to uh, uh, make uh, that I'm gonna put into the motion here, but uh, I, I appreciate uh, Mr. Waite uh being diligent and, and keeping at this and, and trying to find workable solutions and and, and I know this will be a quality development, so, Mr. Mayor, I, I would move that we approve uh the annexation and preliminary plat for H two zero one nine zero one three five. Uh, with lots fif- fourteen and fifteen on the west end of the development be restricted to a single-story uh approximately twenty-five-foot height restriction, and that a suitable pathway be uh put into the open space on the east end of the development accessing uh Locust Road.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Uh, i- if I might suggest one thing, if legal doesn't, can we remove the word approximately twenty-five and just go with twenty-five, so that it's clear for staff?
Yes, uh, twenty-five feet.
Second agree?
I do agree, wholeheartedly.
Okay. Uh, is there any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Perrow.
Uh, I'd like counsel to consider uh Sonia's suggestion, which is that, I believe it was Sonia, that suggested the possibility of them being able to put a bonus room uh with limited viewing, if it fits within that twenty-five-feet limitation.
Uh, Mr. Mayor's maker of the motion, I don't have any trouble with that. If they can fit, fit the bonus room in, in that heights restriction, I'm, I'm with the window facing the front, I'm, I'm fine with that.
I think that gives them some more.
I think that gives them some more options for for their their buyers if we if we can consider that. Thank you.
Is there anything specific that should be added to the motion, Mr. Nary, in regards to that? Or does that work?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, so what I guess, acknowledged from Councilmember Hogue, and is you're okay with a bonus row as long as there's no rear facing windows as part of your motion. Is that correct?
And Mr. Mayor, Mr. Nary, yes, if it if it can be done within the height restriction we've specified.
So so I think does the second agree with that?
Mr. Burr. I agree with that officially.
My my my, sorry, Mr. Mayor, my volume went away just for about 10 seconds. I didn't hear what was said. I apologize.
It it was specific that the second agree with the the bonus room within the 25 foot with no rear facing window.
Now, my my only concern with that is you in that, I I just think that there's, it's going to be very, very hard for our city staff or anyone at the city to 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 verify that that is definitely the case. You know, if they can fit, you know, I I just want the height restriction to be 25 feet, period. Whatever they can do with that, and if it meets our code, and if if it meets design review, then that's fine. But other than that, I think you get into the weeds a little bit. It's it's difficult to manage to make sure that those 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 two homes are actually built in accordance with with the motion. So I I my my motion will only be for a 25 foot height restriction. That's it.
So the second does not agree incorporating that information. Maybe just clarification from staff, because it was implied. Under existing code, does a does a bonus room qualify as a second for or not? Because really, then the only question is, it would be allowed under the motion. But it would also could include a window under the motion. I don't know.
Mr. Mayor. So I'll try to respond to that. I I got your point. It's easiest, it's best just to restrict the height if if you, however, we do building restriction forms are what they're called, and we put certain restrictions on certain lots when council approves such things. So for instance, since this, these two lots would be restricted to 25 feet in height, we would make sure that those plans are reviewed to make sure they comply with that. If you want to add that they can have a bonus room, then we would just add that as part of the condition and review the review the plans at the same time. Either way is fine.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hogue.
Question, Sonia, to follow up on that. Then if we if we restrict it to 25 foot, we don't say second story, if they can fit a bonus room in that 25 feet, that does not preclude them from doing so. Is that right?
That is correct. Okay, if you want to just keep it simple and leave it at that, then that's great with staff.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
That's the the reason that I mentioned it because I believe in Mr. and Councilman Hogue's original motion, he had stated single story with a 25 foot height limitation. So I I think probably we may want to consider restating the motion if possible. Thank you, yes.
Mr. Mayor, and question for Mr. Nary. Can I withdraw my motion and try this again?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Hogue, that would be fine.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, with consent of the second, I'll withdraw my first motion and try this again. I would move that we approve the Almond subdivision H 2019-0135 with the following condition. Lot 14 and 15 be restricted to a height of 25 feet. And that there be a suitable pathway developed in the open space on the east end of the development accessing Locust Grove Road.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the previous or this motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Just want to thank the applicant for providing this revised application. I feel like it really fits the neighborhood much better than the previous one and appreciate the thought that that would into that.
Okay. There's no further comments. Let's court call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Cavanagh?
Aye.
Perrow?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Hogue?
Aye.
Burnt?
Aye.
All eyes. The item is agreed to. Thank you very much. Staff and applicant, we appreciate it. We've reached item 10 on our agenda. Is there anything for a future meeting topic consideration?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Just a suggestion for you and council president to discuss. Were staff returning back to to City Hall, might be good next week to just get an update. That point will be about a weekend, how that's all working in terms of meeting the needs of our citizens, meeting the needs of our employees. I heard Councilmember Burnt talking about some of the protocols in place when he was in City Hall before our meeting started. So just getting an update about what's working. Any evolutions or changes that we're making to better support our employees and to be accommodating to the public.
Done.
Okay. If nothing else, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burm.
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hogue.
Second the motion.
Have motion second to adjourn the meeting. Is there a discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay? We are adjourned.
Everyone, good night.